Everybody, so we are going to call the meeting to order and if we could all stand for the salute to the slide. Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republics where it stands, one nation, unbroken, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Take note that all commissioners are present and here today and are there going to be any agenda changes?
Maybe just a couple of clarifications. Item E2, an appeal by Catherine Johnson, stated on the agenda, it's been removed, just a reminder that that's, we won't be hearing that. Item E5, appeal by Ron Wilson, we will be requesting a continuance, but I think we need to open it up and then continue it. There's some additional information we need to review before it comes to you, so we've asked the appellant if he would be willing to continue that for two weeks and so we would be requesting that you do that. One correction, item E6 is actually not a public hearing, it's an action item, so that should just be noted that that's an action item, not a hearing.
Okay. Okay, we have on the agenda the consent of approval of minutes for May 10.
Think you need to go to public comments first.
Yes, thank you. I'm not awake, I swear. Sorry. Is there anybody that has anything they'd like to say in public comment that's not on the agenda today? No? Okay, thank you. We can close public comment and now we will go to the consent agenda and approval of the minutes. Does anybody have any changes of the minutes?
Not to May 10.
Okay.
No.
Okay, how about May 24th?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
On page five, under number seven, and then under the, in the motion paragraph, after it says Resolution 2018-041 comma, it should be, should have added "as amended" comma.
Okay. Which, I'm sorry, which item?
Sure, it's item seven on page five.
Uh huh.
And then under the, in the motion paragraph.
Oh, okay. As amended.
As amended.
Thank you. Good catch. Okay, thank you. So can I get a motion to approve of the minutes for May 10, 2018, and May 24, 2018 as amended?
Aye, so move.
Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, motion carries by vote. Okay, so now we will go on to our public hearings and we're going to start with 2016-450 and it looks like Scott is presenting.
All right, as you said, this is Appeal 2016-450 for Mr. Tai Tu. Some background, he submitted a application June of 2016 for 22,000 square feet of cultivation. As a result, he's under all the applicable provisions of the Cannabis Code. He was denied for various reasons, we'll just go through them one by one here. First off, pursuant to County Code 1795-170A2, registration can be denied due to violations of federal, state, or local law. The local law in question is Calaveras County Code 3 dot 56 dot 040, which is the Commercial Cannabis Cultivation and Cannabis Wholesale and Retail Activity Tax, commonly referred to as the Measure C Tax. The registrant, being a registered cultivator, is subject to said tax as of this date in time. I double-checked this morning, he has failed to pay the second installment of the tax that was due this past December. The second reason he was denied is due to lack of a valid state seller's permit. Section, well, we'll just go through all those, but as you are very well aware, Section 17 dot 95 N5B requires that a seller's permit be obtained prior to September 7, 2016. A seller's permit was submitted to our office after we requested it on January 9. The seller's permit in question was dated January 8 of this year, sorry, both were 2018. When contacted, the applicant stated that he obtained the seller's permit on January 8 of 2018. Therefore, he missed the deadline of September 7, 2016 and failed to adhere to County Code. Other issues with this that he was denied for is lack of a valid indemnification agreement, landowner consent form, or lease agreement. The documents that were submitted with the application had the wrong street address. Instead of saying 150 Acorn Way, that the parcel in question is addressed in the county system and as is stated on his application, they said 78 Acorn Way, so we requested that we have updated documents reflecting the correct address. When we sent written requests for new documents, went unanswered, the written request stated that we needed a response within 10 days or denial would be a definite possibility. 20 days after we sent the letter, receiving no response, we denied the application on the grounds of lack of indemnification agreement, lack of landowner consent form, lack of lease agreement, lack of seller's permit, and not paying the Measure C tax. Shortly after we sent out the denial notice, we received our request letter back, came back unclaimed, was never picked up at the address on file. After it was denied, Mr. Tu appealed our denial and at that time, on April 2, which would have been, let me see here, nearly a month after, actually exactly one month after we initially sent out the request for further information, that is when we received a new address for Mr. Tu with his, with his appeal letter and request. So, in that appeal letter, he states that he did not supply the required documents because he never received the notice. He does not mention the problem with the seller's permit, he does not mention the cannabis tax in that letter. It is the department's position that it is the applicant's responsibility to supply us with a new address within 72 hours as required by code, inability to receive documents due to incorrect address is the applicant's responsibility. And regardless of that, he has since been notified for sure because he has received his denial notice of what is required, we have yet to receive any new documentation for his file and he has yet to pay the cannabis tax and in addition, we, he did miss the deadline for the state seller's permit and as a result, we request that the denial be upheld and the appeal be denied.
Okay, any questions?
Yeah, can you tell us, what was the mailing address that was on his application?
It was, PO Box 576 West Point.
Okay, and then the Planning Director's January 2018 notification of the non-payment of the tax was addressed to PO Box 481. Is that, is that, could that just be that when he registered for the tax or paid his first tax payment, was that the address?
Possibly. I don't know the history behind why it was sent to 481.
Okay. Then, as I understand it, the, the...
But either way, he did pay the first installment, so therefore the tax collector, he was notified by the tax collector and was aware of the tax. So regardless of what we said, the tax collector should have notified him as well.
But that, that letter from the Planning Director was not returned, correct?
That one was returned unclaimed.
Oh, it was?
Yep.
Okay. Then the March 2, 2018, letter, addressed to PO Box 576, as you understand that what was printed on it when you got it back, it was that it made it to that post office box, but it was not picked up?
Correct, it was returned unclaimed. Means it sat in that post office box for the requisite number of days. I believe it's 20 days they let it sit there or something like that and then they take it back as a registered mail.
But then apparently the denial letter was not returned because you got an appeal from it.
Yeah, we got an appeal from it, so he was able to find out about it. That may have been through the landowner though, because he sent a denial notice to the landowner as well. The application says PO Box 576. I don't know where that other PO Box comes from.
Okay, thank you. Following up on Commissioner Latish's question, how do we know that the PO Box 576 address ever changed?
Well, with his appeal letter, he gave us a new address.
He could have too, and it seems to me if he got the March 22, 2018 denial letter, which it appears he did because he appealed from it, if it changed, we don't know when it changed.
That's true.
Okay. On the tax, was there a bill sent for the second installment of the Measure C taxes? Or is it all one bill?
The tax collector sends a bill in May, or June, in November, or May in November.
She's required by the court to send out a single bill and it goes out in May prior to the first installment, but she sends, she, as a matter of practice, sends out a reminder bill also in the fall and the address to which she sent that does come from the planning department. So, and I would imagine the first bill, since it was paid, did go to the correct address.
Was there any request for redetermination of that tax?
There was not.
And the tax has not been paid, the second installment, correct?
Correct, I checked this morning.
Okay. And why was it the applicant supplied a seller's permit in January of this year?
We were going through our files and noticed that there was no seller's permit and so contacted them and said, "If you have one, please supply it." And they supplied us with one from 2018.
Okay.
How's the contact yet for that?
It is not clear in the file whether it was by mail or phone.
Thank you.
Do know verification that it was, that the date, the date that the seller's permit was obtained, that verification was obtained by phone, I know that much. But then if it's a request, I don't know if that was by mail or phone.
So the taxes that we're talking about are for 2017, not 18, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And under the ruling on that, it says may, not shall, correct, if you're growing? Under the verbiage, under 3.56? They, the county may collect the tax, but under the square foot, per square foot, it says shall, isn't there?
I'm not sure which section you're referring to, but the basis for the denial comes from not only just the general requirement to pay the tax, but it's specifically stated in 3.56040 that failure to pay the tax after demand for payment in full shall constitute grounds for, shall constitute grounds for registration, permit, or certification revocation and may result in revocation proceedings as well as penalties and so on.
Okay, so when I'm looking at Section 3.56.030A, provides in relevant part, "The Board of Supervisors may impose a tax on the privilege of cultivating medical cannabis by a license." Then on Section 3.56030B, provides in relevant part, "Every person engaged in commercial cannabis activity as defined in this chapter shall pay a commercial cannabis activity in the following sums." So under 2017, it says may, but for 2018, it would be shall?
Well, the tax was imposed.
Yeah, they may impose it, so they did.
And it was, yeah, it was, and so, and no one in 2018, except for through the termination period of the regulatory program, were engaged in commercial cannabis activities at all. So I don't think we're collecting any taxes at all for 2018.
Okay, but under 2017, if they weren't growing any, we still impose the tax?
So long as they were currently registered and had the privilege to grow, we didn't inquire whether or not they did. If they told us they wanted the privilege, received the privilege, we didn't inquire thereafter whether or not they actually did grow.
Okay. All right, is there any further questions on that?
Well, is it the county's position that if the tax bill goes out and there's no request for redetermination of that assessment within the specified period, that that assessment is final and not subject to challenge in court or before the planning commission?
That is the county's position.
I think Commissioner Meehan used the difference between the "may" language, says that it, that enables the board to enact the tax. They did so. Once they do so, then the growers shall pay the tax.
Okay. Okay, and we're still dealing with the seller's permit as well, too. Okay, so would you guys like to hear from the appellant at this point, or do you have any more questions?
Appellant.
Okay, is the appellant here?
He's not, he's unable to make it.
Can you come up to the microphone, please, and state your name?
My name's Kevin Nguyen, Tai Tu's nephew. He's unable to make it, but he said that he had, he didn't receive a lot of mail, or if he knew, he would have paid anything.
Okay, so did he give you anything or in writing saying that you would be his representation or that you could speak on his behalf?
No, he's in Vietnam.
Okay. So, do I allow him just to speak at public comment? So, does your cousin know you were going to be here for you, for him?
My uncle.
Uncle, I'm sorry. And your uncle can't be here because?
He's in Vietnam.
And did he know the appeal was coming?
Yes.
Okay. Do you work and you run the farm? He's just the name?
Oh, no.
No? Okay. Okay, so, go ahead and give us just a simple lowdown of what you've, what you know.
I don't really know much, but he told me to find out what he needs to, for the license and what he needs to pay and things like that.
Okay, so he wanted you here to listen in and see what, what's going to happen and what you, what he needs to do?
Yeah.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions?
Do you happen to know whether he still has this PO Box 576?
576, I don't, I think it's 481, PO Box. I'm not really sure about the other. I'm, is that just, not sure.
Okay.
Are you involved in the business at all, or the farm, or anything?
No, I'm his nephew, but I was planning to, but because of what's going on right now, I'm not sure either.
Okay, so you, you don't, I'm sorry, I did not mean to interrupt.
Does that mean you don't know personally whether he got the various notices we've been talking about?
Yes, I don't know.
You don't know, okay.
But he told me to find out what he needs and...
Well, he got the, he got the letter because it says Mr. Tu appealed the denial on April 2. In his appeal letter, Mr. Tu states he did not supply the required materials because he did not receive anything from planning staff. Okay, so, I don't even think it's a matter of that he didn't receive it, it's a matter of he's supposed to follow the urgency ordinance guidelines.
Well, it's also...
We didn't, we didn't mail the urgency ordinance guidelines out, you, you took that list and then you came into the county and applied for an application based on that and following those rules. You might not have got the correct tax information, the correct tax paper in the mail than you would, but you're right about the seller's permit. It doesn't matter, so.
And it could well be that his post office box did receive the letters, I mean, that's apparent, that's, that's what the planning department believes, is that he received the letter demanding the more details and it just wasn't picked up and eventually it was returned.
Well, the nephew just stated that he believes that the PO Box 481 is the correct address and that's the address it was... Okay, can I, can I interrupt for one second? If you guys don't have any further questions for the appellant, I want to go ahead and close this portion and...
It's, it's my understanding that you don't know whether or not this PO Box 576 still exists.
Yes, sir, I'm not, I don't know about that.
You don't know? Yeah, okay.
I, I can ask him.
Well, we appreciate your coming.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, so, do you have any further input you want to give?
No.
Okay, then we're going to go ahead and close this portion and you can go ahead and sit back down and then we will go back to public comment and see if they have anything further they'd like to state on it.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Is there anybody in the public that has anything they'd like to comment on this particular appeal? Okay, seeing none, I will close public comment. Do you have anything further?
No, well, concerning PO Box 481 or that other one was, we had sent mail to that previously as well and that came back unclaimed, just like PO Box 576, so.
Okay.
Either way, mail was not being picked up. That's all I have.
You have nothing in the file showing that the PO Box 576 had been officially changed to 481?
Correct, we have received no notification that 576 has been changed or is no longer a valid address to send mail to this application.
Okay. Okay, do you have any, do you have any questions? Nope. Okay, do you have anything further you want to add, or?
Maybe...
You have to come up to the mic, please. Thank you, appreciate that.
Maybe if the mail wasn't picked up, it's usually like in the winter, he's not around a lot, so I'm not sure if that's the case.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so I'm going to close the public hearing and bring it back to the commissioners for deliberations.
Okay, well, on the tax, it seems to me the assessment was made, there was no request for redetermination, that makes the assessment final. It hasn't been paid to date, that to me is the end of the issue and that's all we need to consider and probably all we can consider. On the seller's permit, clear violation, wasn't, no, no documentation was submitted by September 7 of 2016, nothing apparently happened on that until this year, another clear violation. On the failure to provide the various forms with the correct address, it never has happened, that's a violation. I'm not convinced that there was a, there has been proved a change in the mailing address for Box 576.
I would agree with you on all points, I'm not sure, and the resolution, it doesn't specifically nail him for no change of address, it's, the ordinance is cited, I don't know that we need to change the language in the resolution, is what I'm saying on that.
I think there's one phrase that we might just want to strike, if, if you don't feel that there was actually a violation of provision and on the last, or on page three of the resolution, the first paragraph after the, after the "you," applicant did not provide planning department with valid indemnification agreement and the planning department was not notified of a new mailing address. I would just strike that last part, starting with "and" the planning department.
Good.
Okay, well, I have some other comments under resolution, but I think I should probably wait to hear if the other commissioners' views are.
Do you have more? How about that?
It seems to me that he hasn't opposed anything, that there's no opposition, nothing in writing, no, no one here to oppose it. It really isn't an appeal, he hasn't got a case, or he hasn't presented a case, just put that line.
I think we ought to make it clear to the nephew that this was, this was his chance to say, "No, you're wrong, I've supplied this," or I, you know, this, this was his chance, we can't now give him another chance to, to go forward and correct any of these errors.
Okay, if we're down to the resolution, I do have some suggestions there. A typo in the fourth whereas clause, where the reference to APN 010-00-004, the, the middle digit should be 008. And then down in the last paragraph on page four, the last line, and that tax has become full, due and payable, should be fully due and payable. And then on page two of four, the top paragraph that heads, that's headed evidence, last line where it says "As of May 25, 2018, the applicant had not paid this tax," which is a violation of local law, I would say "As of May 25, 2018 and as of the date of this hearing, the applicant has not paid, etc." Then down on paragraph three, I would strike 3A, it has to do with the change of address because it's not relevant in the absence of a finding that his address changed and he didn't give us notification, give the planning department notification. And then under the evidence, paragraph three on the last page, there's some errors there. There's a, the third sentence says "On April 22, 2018, the application was denied," I think that's March 22nd?
Yes, you're correct.
And the next line says "On April 23," should be March. And then I think that the last sentence, "no other address for Mr. Two was submitted to planning department till the denial was appealed," should be stricken. And, um, missing under the evidence is a, is, is a, is a recital that "as of the date of the hearing, the applicant has still not provided the planning department with a valid indemnification agreement, landowner consent form, or lease agreement." That's all I have.
The only things I have would be on, on page two, under number three, the line starts "registration for," it should be registration form with an M. And I didn't check, I just noticed this, on, on the quotation of the, uh, of the ordinance under, at the bottom of page two, is, is it really subdivision Q? Or is it the, if the owners of the parcel to be registering?
I believe so, yes.
That's correct. Q is correct.
Q is correct, yes.
Okay. I just thought we might have an upside down B there.
That's all I have.
Okay.
Oh, let's see, oh, yeah.
Would you be ready for Scott to read the recommendation as amended? Okay, Scott?
Stat recommends that the planning commission adopt resolution 2018-045 as amended, thus denying appeal 2016-450, thereby abolishing the planning director's denial of application 2016-450.
Okay, give the motion.
So moved.
One second.
Thank you. All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries five oh.
This action is final unless an appeal is filed to the board of supervisors within 15 calendar days.
Do you understand what he's, what he's talking about? Okay, great. Thank you very much for coming today. Okay, so item number 20176, the appeal by Catherine Johnson, is being removed from the agenda. Do we need to do anything to, is that just automatically done?
That's been done already.
Okay. 2016242, appeal by Anna Step. Are you, Ben, you're going to present that one?
Yes, I am.
Okay, thank you.
Right, Ben Diamond, planted training. This is appeal 2016-242 by Anna Step on behalf of Frog Farm. On June 20, 2016, Anna Step submitted a commercial medical cannabis cultivation registration for a mixed light grow of 5,000 square feet of canopy, pursuant to 795165N5B of the Calaveras County Code. By September 7th, commercial cannabis cultivation registrants were required to provide verifiable documentation demonstrating that the registrant, registrant has completed a number of tasks for the medical cultivation operation located on the parcel, specifically receipt of a state seller's permit. For this, registration for state seller's permits were submitted. Two of them were temporary seller's permits. One was only valid for the day of June 14, 2016. Another stated that it was valid from the June 14th to August 14, 2016. However, both of these permits share the same number, and checking them on the verification portal through the California Department of Tax and Fee Administration showed that they were both only valid for the day of June 14, 2016. A, another permit that was submitted was a consolidated seller's permit, which was started on October 3, 2016. This permit is currently still valid, however, a consolidated seller's permit does not permit the sales at that site. That is just the main permit for the company. So an example would be, like a franchise would have a consolidated seller's permit, and then all its locations would have the sub-permits underneath that consolidated seller's permit, which authorized sales at those locations. So, since we did not ever receive a sub-permit for the cultivation site, the consolidated permit didn't necessarily verify that there was a seller's permit for it. The final permit that was submitted was a just run-of-the-mill seller's permit that was submitted on February 24, 2017. The location listed on this permit was for Penn Valley, and since it was not for the cultivation site, did not satisfy the requirements of the code. And it was also closed on the day of February 24, 2017, and is... All ahead.
Okay, so, just a quick question. When I'm looking at this, it appears that she applied for that permit to be in Valley Springs, but the issuing at the state level says Penn Valley, but she, on her online form, typed in Valley Springs. That they put the wrong city on that. Am I wrong?
Uh, for the Penn Valley one, the location you put in is the location it's issued for. The other permits were issued for the Valley Springs location, but the February 24, 2017 one was for Penn Valley.
Okay. I'm looking, I'm looking at where she filled it out on the State Department of Tax and Fee Administration form. She wrote Valley Springs in, but when the seller's permit was issued, it issued to Penn Valley, as if though the state did a typo on that. I'm not sure, just...
I think what you're referring to is the search, search that the...
So, this is...
But is this, this looks like a form that the planning department used to search for.
I thought this was, I thought that was her evidence.
No, that's the verification page from the Tax and Fee Administration.
Okay, well, we'll ask her where Penn Valley came in when we get there. Is there any other questions?
Yeah, I, I don't understand why, if we have a violation of the state seller's permit requirement, why we then also pile on with a violation by, for failure to comply with the requirements of this chapter. It just, it seems, if the seller's permit ground fails, that ground fails. It just, it just seems to me to be a...
Well, when you fail to provide something that that chapter requires, then pursuant to 17081, that's the ground for denial. So if you didn't put up your fence, you didn't follow the requirements of the chapter, and your denial is pursuant to 17081.
You have to have that in there in order for the non-receivable to be...
Correct.
Meaningful. Okay.
Any other questions, or would you like to hear from the appellant? Appellant, please. Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you very much. Um, I can provide some answers to the Penn Valley permit. That was my attorney.
I'm sorry, will you state your name for the record?
I'm sorry, Anna Step.
Thank you.
From Frog Farm. Um, the Penn Valley address is my attorney, and they did that one. What basically happened for me with the temporary permit that I applied for on June 14th, I clicked the wrong box. There's a little tiny box, and I can't even print out evidence of it, because the website changed. There's a little tiny box that says temporary permit, and I don't know why I clicked it, but I clicked. And as soon as I found it, I, several months later, when I went to do an event, and I needed to have a valid seller's permit, I found out then, and I went and applied, so it was a mess-up, and it was on my part. And I'm appealing to the commission here to consider that, that I did put everything in there to try and do things right, and I clicked the wrong box. Simple clerical error.
Okay, so that would have been in 2016 and...
Yes, the, the June, let me look at the date on it, the June 14th.
That's the one that says temporary seller's permit?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. That's the one that I made the error on.
Okay. And then again, in 614 to 814, it also once again says temporary.
I don't know on that one. I, I don't have an answer on that one, because I only went in once on the 14th of June and asked for the, the seller's permit and got it wrong.
Okay, and then in October...
October is when I found it.
And you have a consolidated seller's permit.
Well, actually, the consolidated seller's permit, it has the Penn Valley's address correct.
Valley Springs.
No, this was Valley Springs.
Uh, Valley Springs.
Okay, then I, I asked for the wrong seller's permit again. I'm sorry, I'm retired military. I never had to ask for seller's permit, and it was a little confusing for me.
The problem with the consolidated seller's permit, let's see if I can find it now, is that it, it says on it, right under consolidated seller's permit, "this permit does not authorize retail sales." That you then have to have a, a permit for the specific address.
Right.
So that, that's a problem there, is that we, we don't, we've never had a, a seller's permit that actually permitted you to, to have retail sales.
I know. I didn't have any retail sales that year. Our whole crop failed, so... So, 2017, I had some sales, but...
What made you go back in February of 2017 and apply again?
Because I looked at it and I got it wrong again. I'm just, I don't have...
What did you get wrong the last time?
Well, I only, I applied twice for my seller's permit. Once was the temporary, and then one other time that I thought was the correct one. The consolidated permit, I don't know where that, I don't recall ever creating that one. So, I don't know.
Okay, so... Valley Springs, consolidated. Where's the one that says Penn Valley?
No, that's right by the, right by the...
So it's the last one?
Yeah.
Okay, so on, in the February of 2017...
That is when, actually, that is when I got the, I canceled that particular one, because I thought the other one was the correct one. I don't know. Doesn't matter anymore. We're all banned.
No, it does matter. We're trying to work through this with you right now. So, when you, okay, so I just want to understand why and how this happened so many times, because you obviously got the permit before the September 7th deadline.
Yes.
Okay, but it wasn't done properly. Did the county notify you it was not proper?
No.
How did you know it was not proper?
I found it months later, when I went...
And then you went back in?
I went back in and corrected it, or tried to correct it, and obviously made more mistakes, but you know.
Okay, did you send the correction to the county?
Not right away, no. I should have.
Did you send any of the corrections to the county?
No, ma'am.
So you wouldn't have corrected it?
I was just, I was just trying to fix it, and so that if the subject ever came up, I would say, "Oh, I fixed that here." But I didn't, I wasn't proactive, and I did not present it to the county like I should have.
Okay. When you got your denial, did you bring these in?
Yes, ma'am.
And did you say that the, the permit in February 2017 was applied for by your attorney?
I believe so, sir.
And, and their, that was their address?
Correct.
That got on it?
And I think that, I'd have to look at the numbers, but I believe that the one, that the attorney, the... What I believe happened is that the consolidated permit was applied for by my, by my attorney. I went in and changed the address on it in order to file my taxes, because it has to match. And so, I got another consolidated seller's permit, and I didn't realize, being new to business, that there was a difference. I didn't know that there was a consolidated permit versus, a temporary permit versus all these other permits.
And it seems to me your attorney should have, if they applied for the seller's permit...
I know.
They should have noted that the address that was, they should have been able to get a seller's permit that had the proper address on it.
Exactly, sir.
You might raise that with them.
I'm planning on it.
Did you have grow sites at more than one address?
No, sir. Just, just my home address.
So, why apply for the consolidated seller's permit that permits you to file a consolidated return when you sell from more than one location?
That's the one that I believe my attorney filed, because we were, may have been doing events. I don't know.
So, you, you believe your attorney filed for the consolidated seller's permit?
I believe my attorney filed for the consolidated, and I'm kind of mucked things up by trying to change addresses and stuff.
And also for the seller's permit that's in 2017? He applied for both?
I applied for that one.
Then, then how did the Penn Valley address get on the 2017 permit?
Maybe that was the one that they applied for as well. I don't know. I just know that there were multiple permits. I applied for two of them. One was wrong, and I thought the other one was correct.
So, with the events that you were doing, just so that I can understand maybe what your attorney was thinking, were you doing off-site events, or were you doing on-site?
We were planning on doing some off-site events if we had the opportunity. It never came up, but...
So was this like for products at a fair type thing?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
So then the consolidated allows you to go to different events, and that's what your attorney would have been thinking?
Yes, sir.
But under our rulings, you had to have the permanent sellers?
Well, I think you, under the consolidated, you have to have specific permits, maybe temporary or whatever, at particular addresses, because the consolidated states this permit does not authorize retail sales. So, so another step is needed wherever you're going to make the retail sales.
Okay. Can I go ahead and address the, see if there's any public comment, and then we'll come back to you for rebuttal?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody in the public that would like to comment on this appeal? Seeing that, I will close the public comment.
Is that better? Okay, so there's no public comment, so I'm closing that and bringing it back and seeing if there's any rebuttal here from Ben.
Nothing further.
Okay. I have questions. When you were going through this, and you, did you notice that there were four different, oh, no, she brought them in?
I'm not sure when all of the seller's permits came in. Unfortunately, none of them are date-dated.
Okay, well, she says when she got the denial letter.
As far as I know, they didn't come in with the denial letter, but they likely came in sometime before that. They are dated 2016 and 2017, and this was denied fairly recently, so...
Okay, so where did you, where did you become alerted to a problem with her not having a seller's permit, since she's had four consistent, the time, date, timeframes?
I'm not certain when the planning department first became aware of it. It didn't appear that there's a missing requirements letter or anything of that nature in the file, so it must have just been during a review.
Was it because the address is wrong?
Uh, it was likely because the first two temporary permits, of course, were, you know, temporary and not valid anymore, and then the address consolidated one, depending on when those came in. I'm not certain.
Do you, do you get notified by the state, or the only way you get a copy of this is by getting it from the appellant?
The only way we get a copy is from the...
If I could add to that, on the denial letter, it says, "On April 17th, planning staff reviewed your seller's permit and found it to be invalid due to it being closed." So I assume that we looked at what had, had been submitted early on, you know, with, with the, the June filing, where these are closed, these are no longer valid. It was then after, from what I understand from the testimony from Ms. Step, that after she got the denial letter, she provided us copies of the other ones, but then we, you know, determined that those still were invalid, one because of the wrong location, the other one because it had also been closed, or because it was consolidated and not a, a regular seller's permit.
Do we know if any of these seller's permits were submitted before September 7th?
Of the June 14 temporary ones, were.
Okay. If there's any other questions?
Yeah, I, I have a question. Looking at the urgency...
Yeah, I, I have a question. Looking at the, the... Sub five B, what is that, one sixty-five N, five B, which is apparently what they're going on. The exact language is receipt of a, of a state seller's permit. Is the county's position that that's sufficiently strong language to say that whatever she submitted is not sufficient?
The county believes that it's receipt of a valid permit for the cultivation site.
I mean, the, the words are a state seller's permit.
That's true, but to engage in sales, you'd need a valid one and that would be a somewhat odd to let a invalid permit skate, because a seller's permit would be an invalid one as well.
The word valid is in the previous section on the business license. For some reason, it doesn't show up in the state seller's permit.
I'm not sure why it's not there.
To, to, to treat this as, as just wide open and openly vague, I mean, for example, what if they turned in a state seller's permit from Idaho that was valid in nineteen sixty-four? Uh, that would not meet the requirements of the code and the way we're reading it. I, I think I think it's implicit in the language and in the scheme of, of the statute that we needed a valid seller's permit, because these people are presumably going to be selling product and paying taxes on that product.
I mean, it doesn't say that a consolidated permit is wrong, it doesn't, I mean, this, this is a strange situation.
Well, the consolidated permit itself says it does not authorize retail sales.
Go ahead. But it does say it's a consolidated permit and this thing says a state seller's permit.
Yes, sir.
Does a consolidated permit, is, is that a state seller's permit? I, I don't know.
Well, it wouldn't have worked for, for her to sell wholesale product from the particular site for which her registration was. It would have to be a separate seller's permit, as Mr. Ladish indicated. If a consolidated seller's permit that allows an individual who has multiple sites to be able to file one return and it should have just been one seller's permit for one site, that's all we really needed. Or a consolidated permit and one for the local permit.
No, I, I agree that that's kind of what, the way we've been treating this in previous cases, but now that I'm actually reading it.
Well, the code says they have to provide verifiable documentation demonstrating that the registrant has completed all of the following tasks for the medical cannabis cultivation operation located on the parcel to be registered. So that means that you couldn't submit one for Idaho. And it seems to be implicit in this is that the state seller's permit has to be a valid state seller's permit, otherwise there would be no point in requiring an invalid state seller's permit. Or one that otherwise doesn't permit sales from that location. So I don't think I have a problem with any vagueness with this. I think it's clear enough.
Okay. Ms. Strep, would you like to come back up, please? Who is your attorney and where are they located?
Harvest Law out of Sacramento. And actually, I think they're shutting down, so I don't think I have an attorney there anymore.
Do, do you know somebody by the name of Melissa Sanchez?
Yes, she worked for that attorney's office.
Okay. Because I pulled up the address that's on that permit and there are multiple farms registered under that address.
That's probably because it's the lawyer's address or what they used.
Okay, so there's, it's interesting. Nowhere can I find where it says that it's an attorney's office, a legal office. All I get when I pull it up is farms at that address.
It's a, Harvest Law is a law office dedicated to farms. That's the only thing I can think of.
Okay, do you have anything else that you want to say to or add for?
Well, you know, when, in my years in the military, when my subordinates would make a mistake, I gave them an opportunity to correct that mistake. And I just want to say that I feel like I was not given that opportunity to correct the mistake before the deadline by the planning department office. They could have very easily said, hey, you messed up, can you fix this really quick? And it would have been a very easy fix for me. So I'm hoping that you will consider that in my appeal. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody have any further questions for her? I did look it up and her attorney, the Melissa Sanchez, is an attorney at Harvest Law in Sacramento.
No, I don't have any more questions.
No? Okay, then we're gonna need to state positions, look for a motion.
Close the public hearing.
Yeah, we're gonna close the public hearing and bring it back for deliberation.
I do have one question of staff. Once the fact that the state seller's permit that had been submitted wasn't valid any longer, because it was for one day, was there an attempt made to contact Ms. Strep and say, you've got a problem here, you need to fix it, before the denial letter went out?
I'm not aware if there was or not.
Was this file reviewed before September seventh?
I can only assume that it was, given the cursory review, that all of the applications that were taken in were given prior to the seventh. But on the seventh, we received hundreds of business licenses, seller's permits and waterfall documents. We did our best to be able to review them all as fast as possible, but we didn't.
When you reviewed those, if you found a mistake and it was September seventh or September eighth or September ninth, what was the practice of the planning department?
The initial practice was to deny for failure to satisfy that deadline. However, a previous commission's ruling made it so staff would then begin to contact individuals if they had a seller's permit, but just didn't get it to us by the seventh. Some people did and they just forgot to give it to us and that was okay, but others just didn't have it at all.
But if, if, if on the review, if, if review on, say, after September seventh, and you had spotted errors such as we see here today that was just temporary permit, what would have been the...
Typically, we would contact them and give them ten days to fix it.
And that didn't happen here?
I'm not sure if it did or not.
Which seller's permit was submitted with the application? The one that says valid six fourteen, two thousand and sixteen through six fourteen, two thousand and sixteen?
As far as I'm aware, the temporary ones were the ones that were submitted.
Temporary one or ones?
I believe both of them. I'm not certain when the first one or the second one came in, but I assume they were before September seventh.
Well, those, those two show on their face. One was valid for one day and the other one was valid for like two months. Shows right on its face. So if the planning department had looked at them without having to check with the state even, you could see that they wouldn't have authorized sales after September seventh, correct?
Correct.
I guess I'm just a little troubled by the fact that this went on and on and there was no no effort made to give her a chance to fix it.
It looks like she was fixing it on her own as, as she was catching the mistakes. And then her attorney did it and put the wrong address with consolidated, because they register multiple farms. And that would make more sense, why the attorney did consolidated, different county, different rules.
Am I hearing you right, that we didn't give her a ten-day warning notice at all?
I'm not sure if we did.
Not sure being...
There's, there's no, nothing...
There's, there's no record of a letter going out.
In other situations, would you have given them ten days' notice?
Usually that was the practice.
Why is this different?
I believe this file had some other issues that kind of segregated it from the rest and it was separate from those during the main reviews, so maybe I slipped through that one.
So, if I could add to that, this application was submitted on June twentieth. I'm assuming that the seller's permits came in with the packet. During the time that we were accepting those applications, there was a cursory review, do you have the document? We didn't check the date, we didn't check to make sure that was something that was, you know, going to happen afterwards. Unfortunately, due to the numbers of, of applications that we received, you know, we didn't get to them in the, you know, couple of months that we thought we were going to, so that we could have everything cleared up fairly quickly. In some cases, we were unable to complete the review of, of them before the ninety days after the, the ban was imposed, you know, that timeframe expired. So, it just took a lot longer to get to some of these. In some cases, you know, we didn't necessarily do them in any, any specific order. As issues arose, you know, say we had a complaint from someone or an inspection was made that enabled us to act one way or the other, we would then take that file, review it to make sure. At the same time, we were, you know, just doing a, a sort of a systematic review of these. For whatever reason, we did not get to this one until quite late in the review process. It's true that we were providing notice, particularly during two thousand and seventeen, that if something was lacking, that was just simply, you know, paperwork. If they could demonstrate that they, they had it by then, and this was, again, as Ben pointed out, based on the decision that the commission made, that if they had the, the document, just failed to submit it to us, that they could demonstrate that they actually had that by the June or the September seventh date, that we would accept that. And so, we then started a process of, you know, if it was just simply paperwork that was missing, we'd give them a chance to provide that to us. By the time we got, this was April of two thousand and eighteen, the program was winding down and, you know, for whatever reason, we said, you know, hey, there's been, you know, what, a year and a half now of opportunity for this to have been corrected? And we didn't, we didn't have that, so we just felt it was appropriate just to take the action to deny it, given the sort of the lateness, we're, you know, a month and a half away from the end of the program.
Can I do add to that just briefly? The, when, when Ben indicated that people are given a ten-day opportunity to correct the omission, she still would have had to provide within that ten-day window a valid seller's permit that was acquired prior to September seventh, two thousand and sixteen. She wouldn't have been able to, within that ten-day period, apply for a brand-new seller's permit and have that meet the requirement. It's still, there's still a September seventh, two thousand and sixteen deadline requirement.
So that's, that's, that's the key thing as far as I'm concerned. I, I misunderstood that what Ben said. I thought, I heard that if, if this problem had been detected by the department on September eighth, she would have been given ten days to correct it, which would have meant she could go out and get a new seller's permit that was appropriate. Uh, it's, that, that's, am I misunderstanding the department's position?
That, that's incorrect. If they could demonstrate they had one and they just hadn't provided it to us at any time after September seventh, then we said, okay, that's fine. But the fact that it had been a temporary one that expired the day after or two months after the application was filed, there is no way to correct that.
This, this never could have, this particular situation could never have been corrected after September seventh.
That's right.
The, the commission decision that Ben was referring to was a case in which an individual submitted...
No, I, I understand.
And he had his, and he had a seller's permit in his back pocket and he left.
I understand, but I, I just want to make, make it perfectly clear that we're treating this applicant the way we would have treated any applicant. If these problems had been detected as of September eighth, no applicant would have had been given a ten-day period to go out and cure the problem by getting a new seller's permit.
That's correct.
Okay, so for me, it's a little bit different, because she did not wait until September, like many did, to go get her permit. She did it in June. Had we not been overwhelmed and this had been looked at in June or July or August or the beginning of September, the mistake would have been caught and she would have been able to fix it. It wasn't caught, she wasn't given time to fix it. Then she figures it out and goes, oh my goodness, and tries at it again to get it right. Then she doesn't get it right again, so she has her attorney do it, who gets it wrong. Unfortunately, she paid somebody to get it wrong. And she did have a permit, she did file three months in advance of the deadline. It's not like we're dealing with somebody that never applied until after the September seventh deadline. I am more apt to give this lady credit for going out there, getting a permit three months before, not waiting until September seventh, like many of them did, paying her fees, not just once, but a couple of different times. They were simple mistakes by checking the wrong boxes. We've looked at other things before where someone has made an error, corrected it. I just feel like she made every effort to get this right and she did it three months in advance. And had we not been overwhelmed and our planning department reviewed these, it would have been caught before the deadline and she would have been told to go get it corrected. That's how I feel.
I kind of disagree with you, because the fact that this permit says, I agree she did get ahead of time and I don't give her credit for it. But it says she got it six fourteen, but it was only good through eight fourteen. So at that point, she had plenty of time, even after the permit was not valid anymore. She'd get another one. And she did.
I think there were a lot of deadlines coming about in that September seventh period. You go on, you do it, you print it, you got it, you're happy, you did it, you met the deadline. I could see how there would be confusion. Where there was issues with me on other seller's permits is where they just flat out didn't do it until, oh, maybe October, November, December, or the following year or the year after. She made every effort to go do it and do it right the three months before. She didn't wait. She was making every effort to get it done. I, that's just my opinion.
I agree with you, Chairman Murities, and the, it just seems to me in the past, we have allowed retroactive changes. And I'm thinking of things like fences and signs posting that weren't done on, properly. And this one really bothers me, because we never picked it up. That, that's the part that's the strangest thing. If it's so critical to have it by September seventh, why, it, what was it, a year and a half, I heard mentioned? A year and a half, she didn't fix it. Well, a year and a half, we didn't catch it either, so... To me, she did apply for it before the seventh. She tried to correct it herself and then she showed very good faith in the whole process. I haven't heard any claims that she did anything else wrong. Although I do see some mention of residential neighborhood via neighbor's letter. I guess that's not before us.
I guess the problem I'm having is that, that the two permits that were applied for prior to September seventh, both say on their face that they're temporary seller's permits, which should have, and, and they have the effective dates on their face, and so she should have realized that and got it right before September seventh. Having said that, I, I think this falls in the category of clerical error, which I think is what we said about the gentleman who had the permit in his back pocket but didn't turn it in. This is different, because he had a valid seller's permit that met all the requirements, he just didn't turn it in. And we just don't have one here. But the reason we don't have one is because of a clerical error, actually a series of them, by her and by her attorney.
Well, see, for me, when she did it the first time, she sees temporary... Well, see, for me, when she did it the first time, she sees temporary, she does it the second time, she gets another temporary, she doesn't get it right, finds out she doesn't have it right because she probably got a notice, contacted her attorney to get it correct for her, I just see every effort to meet that September 7th deadline and staying on top of it, but that's just me. I mean, if, if she hadn't hired an attorney and let it lapse and then a year later figured it out, that would be one thing, but it appears to me as if though she made every effort to keep this going in the right direction. I mean, that's just me.
Just one thing on the, on the one that's supposedly temporary, June 14th through August 14th. My understanding is you contacted the state tax officials, or at least you went to their site, and even that permit was only valid for June 14th. Is that, am I getting this right?
Yes, both the temporary only June 14th permit and the June 14th to August permit had the same account number, so on the verification portal, it was shown that it was only for June 14th.
But it says August.
Yeah, they have the same account number. One, one was closed June 14th, and so when they queried the state, they got an answer back for one of them, but not the other.
Uh, got it. Okay, that makes sense. So which direction are we going in here?
The life and one would like to uphold the appeal, give her another chance.
I disagree.
I think I'm prepared to uphold the appeal on the grounds this was a clerical error, several of them, at least one of which was not her fault.
If we uphold the appeal, would we, is there any point now in requiring her to get a valid seller's permit?
Well, I think it's correct now except for the address.
At this point, if the appeal is granted, what it would mean is that her application was not denied. She would end up in the small batch of registrations that were neither approved nor denied, but because this program is over, cultivation is no longer allowed. She would not be penalized for having been denied in, you know, potentially in the future or applying for a state license elsewhere where you have to state that you were denied a license in, in a jurisdiction. So this does not approve her, her cultivation registration, it just means it wasn't denied.
I'm prepared to uphold the appeal.
And the, the state, assuming that the, that she applies for a state license or has a state license, the state will require a valid seller's permit as well?
Okay, so can you agree an altered recommendation?
Yes.
Staff recommends that the planning commission adopt Resolution 2018-043, thus granting appeal 2016-242, thereby, or thereby denying the planning director's denial of application 2016-042.
Maybe it would be better if we, since the resolution is for denial, we don't, do not have a resolution for granting the appeal, could we state your intent to grant the appeal? We'll bring back a revised resolution at the next meeting, we'll just put it on consent that, you know, states the reasons for, for granting the appeal.
I like it.
I'll make a motion to grant the appeal.
Second it.
Paul Davis said?
Aye.
Aye.
Close?
Thank you.
4-1?
And included in that motion was to bring back a revised resolution stating the reasons for the granting.
That's what I heard, yeah.
Yeah, that's what I heard too.
And just so we know what to put in the resolution, I heard several things, that she made repeated good faith efforts to meet the requirements, but each one was a clerical error, and that she also relied on the professional services of an attorney who failed to correctly fill out the paperwork. And that's, that's about all I got.
Yeah.
That's good?
Yes.
Okay, let's take a 10-minute break, please. We're back at 10:25.